Mayor, all of the council members have returned to public.
Okay, great, thank you. So we are back in regular sessions. Thank you to the members of the public for your patience. We just finished up an executive session, so now we will go back to our regular agenda, which the next item is a moment of silence and a salute to our flag. So we'll start with a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so now we will move on. The next part of our agenda is the minutes. However, I do see that we have our Assemblyman here, so if Gabriella, if it's all right with you, I'd like to go out of order. Because Councilman Farkas has part of his utility report, is something that we'd want to acknowledge Assemblyman Danielson, and we don't want to make him wait through the entire meeting. So if it's okay with you, we will go out of order and recognize Council President Farkas with an announcement from our Utilities Committee.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, it's my pleasure to announce that the mayor has received notification from Assemblyman Joe Danielson's office that the Borough of Milltown will receive a grant in the amount of $750,000 from the state to assist the Borough in water main relining to help alleviate the conditions that occasionally cause discolored water in our distribution system. This effort is the result of hard work and dedication by Mayor Mayor and the Utility Committee, made up of Councilman James Peretti, Councilman Phil Zambrana, and myself, by collaborating and working together to identify a problem and work together to procure funding to find a solution to our residents' concerns. A big thanks to Assemblyman Joe Danielson and his staff for sitting down with us and listening to our concerns and proactively working through government channels to assist us in obtaining this funding. So at this point, I think the Assemblyman is on, in the Zoom, so let's hear what he has to say.
Mayor, Council, good evening. How is everyone doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing fantastic, learning to live a new way with new disciplines and, you know, doing things differently. But so Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. It is my honor and privilege to represent you in the State Assembly, to represent you in the State Assembly and to be your advocate in the legislature. Over the last few years, there has been no problem that together we have not been able to address in Milltown and seek a favorable solution to meet the needs of our residents in Milltown. This includes a large number of employment case claims that my office has handled for you successfully on the behalf of Milltown residents. Last year, together with the Milltown Utilities Commission and Councilman Farkas and Peretti and the mayor and, you know, all the members that wanted to contribute to our efforts, we were able to secure a funding grant from Middlesex County in the amount of $3 million to begin that work on the relining of your aged water lines. As I went door to door in Milltown, that was one of the top issues that people spoke to me about. So it was no surprise that we got to work on that immediately. The lines which, over the past few years, have been broken too often and were at a great expense to your taxpayers. While that grant money was a good start, I did promise you all that I would continue to seek additional funding to ensure clean water for your community, for your town, for your residents. You all gave me 100% from you, and I promised to give you 100% from me, and we were able to do it. So tonight, along with you, I am pleased to announce that the recently signed nine-month state budget signed by Governor Murphy, Milltown will receive that $750,000 in direct state aid to continue your project on the water lines. This was extremely difficult for me, I can't tell you how difficult it was for me, and my partners and my colleagues in the State Legislature and leadership in Middlesex County, because the state has extremely limited funds available for special projects in this fiscal year's pandemic budget. I mean, it's scary if you saw the numbers, but we were able to get Milltown money for your water. I knew it was important, you knew it was important, and we delivered. My efforts on your behalf show that government can work for everyone when we all work together. This aid will mean that your taxpayers will gain some relief in the project costs, and I will continue to push for more funding in our next budget for Milltown taxpayers. So Mayor, Councilman Farkas, Councilman Peretti, all council members, I want to thank you for the opportunity to make a difference and to be here tonight to report on my work. And remember, I'm always at your service.
Well, we really appreciate you joining us tonight and especially for going to bat for us. I know it's been a tough budget year, but it's so nice to hear direct state aid for our water lines. And, you know, we really appreciate you helping us last year with our water and sewer lines. I know Mr. McClellan will have a report about that project going forward, but this will be a direct help to the people that we have heard from year after year that come and say that they have discolored water if they live on in a cul-de-sac or something, and we can really begin to address rewinding those water lines to address this ongoing problem. So we really appreciate your partnership and your advocacy on the behalf of the Borough of Milltown, and, you know, it's certainly appreciated by all of us. So thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and I look forward to completing this project and starting new projects for the benefit of Milltown.
Great, thank you, Assemblyman.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Assemblyman.
Stay well. Okay, so now we'll go back to our agenda and we will move on to the minutes. What is the council's pleasure regarding the Borough Council Minutes from June 20, June 8, 2020?
Will the minutes be approved as typed?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lagotti, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. The Borough Council Minutes from June 17, 2020. What is your pleasure?
Will the minutes be approved as typed?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lagotti, second by Councilman Zambrana. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Next, what's your pleasure for the minutes from the July 13, 2020 meeting?
Will the minutes be approved as typed?
Second.
I have a motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilwoman Lagotti. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon?
Reduce myself.
Thank you. Councilman Lagotti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have five ayes and one extension.
So moved. Next, what is your pleasure for the August 17, 2020 Borough Council Meeting Minutes?
Move that the minutes be approved as typed?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lagotti, second by Councilman Peretti. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Next, we will have the Council Meeting Minutes from September 14, 2020. What's your pleasure?
Will the minutes be approved as typed?
Aye. Seconds is...
That's a little bit ahead. We have a motion by Councilwoman Lagotti, second by Councilman Peretti. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
Thank you, so moved. And finally, we have the minutes from the September 29, 2020 meeting. What's your pleasure?
Will the minutes be approved as typed?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Zambrana. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. See, the clerk has been busy with minutes, so that's, thank you for getting all of those out of the way. Next on our agenda, we had public hearings, which will be tabled to our meeting of October 26, so we will move on to comments from the audience on resolutions. If you have any comments about the resolutions only, please follow the instructions from the clerk and give your name and address for the record.
Instructions are on the screen. If you're calling in from your phone, you can press star nine. You can, from your Mac or PC, press Option or Alt-Y, or you can use the raise hand option in your app or computer program. And we'll wait a moment to see if anyone raises their hand. Mayor, I don't have any hands raised.
Okay, so seeing none, we will close all its comments on resolutions and move on to the bill list. Will the clerk please read Resolution 20-185?
Authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of $770,664.39.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Will this resolution be adopted? Second.
I have a motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilwoman Lagotti. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Council...
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
And Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Mayor, we have six ayes.
Thank you, so moved. Okay, now we will have introduction of resolutions and the reports of the standing committees. A consent resolution has been prepared to cover the resolutions listed on the agenda. If any member of the council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number and it will be pulled from the consent resolution. Okay. Seeing none, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of the council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be resolved by the Mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk, be approved without the necessity of having that individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Did this resolution be adopted?
Second.
Any discussion? I will ask the clerk to please, oh, sorry, I have a motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Zambrana. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved, thank you. Next, we will move on to the committee reports. We will start with the Department of Finance, Administration, and Planning, Councilman Phil Zambrana.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At last, our last council meeting, we discussed briefly of how our new tax bills were calculated and set out, and at that time, I said I would have some numbers using my own tax information from my own residence. And if Gabriella could please share that screen with everyone?
Certainly shared.
Okay, thank you. So this is just on the municipal portion of the taxes for the Zambranas' residents, and as you can see, I thought it was important to highlight how the anomalies, I guess, in years 2018 and 2019, and how proud I am of the work that we did over the past year to make sure that that increase, both dollar and percentage-wise, came down to an acceptable, I guess, number for everyone. Again, this is just my snapshot of what my residence is like, but it pretty much should echo what everybody else's residence is like. So if anyone has any questions?
So the bottom, the tax rates, that's, I can't see the, I can't see the tax rates, Councilman Zambrana, or the graph on the bottom. Would you just explain, because it's a little small, so it's municipal is the blue?
Yes, municipal is blue, library is orange. Is that better?
No, I can see, yeah, yeah, just so for the members of the public, yep.
Yeah. So again, where you always want to be from a dollar perspective or from an increase perspective, percentage-wise, is sort of like at a 2% rate. I mean, taxes never go down, but they should never go up, you know, exponentially like in 18 and 19. And that was probably due a lot to the project across the street. That's, that...
Anybody else have any questions?
Basically what it was due to.
Jeanette, do you have anything to add? No?
No, I don't.
Okay. No, I mean, I really appreciate that it's leveled, especially this year due to, you know, COVID. I'm sure it took a lot of hard work to get that number as low as it possibly could be. I'm sure there were a lot of things that the Finance Committee had to include to, and figure in to get that number down as low as possible. So appreciate, appreciate the work of the committee.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to add? Okay. Anything else, Phil?
Nope, that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the Department of Public Safety, Councilman Nick Lagotti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two reports tonight. First one is the Milltown Police Monthly Report. The Milltown Police Department continues traffic enforcement and radar throughout town. Residents are reminded that children have returned to school and to drive safely and obey our local traffic laws as pedestrians and vehicle traffic may increase. As Halloween approaches, residents are reminded, per the Borough Ordinance Version 3-3.1, no persons under the age of 17 years of age shall be permitted to be on the streets and/or public areas of the borough after 8:00 PM on October 30th and October 31st unless accompanied guardian. Please continue to report suspicious activity, traffic concerns, and non-emergent type calls to 732-828-1100. Police will determine as a necessary response. Walking complaints are discouraged due to COVID-19 concerns and restrictions. Emergency and life-threatening calls, please use 911. Residents are reminded to report any concerns and/or complaints by using the official Borough website or by calling the Milltown Police directly. The Milltown Police Department does not monitor and will not react to response or comments or complaints posted on any third-party social media sites. Thank you, Chief Brian Cannello. My second report, Madam Mayor, is a senior center update. Knitted and crocheted items are being dropped off to different care centers this week. Please contact Debbie Cuddy for limited supplies if needed. Halloween event, with COVID-19 cases going up in Middlesex County and seniors expressing a great apprehension, although very excited, this event has been canceled for now. Our senior director will be working on ways with our seniors so that they can stay connected to our senior center, whether they have a computer or not. Based on state directives changing each day, we will try our best to reopen in the best, safest, and most responsible way if and when we are allowed. Please contact Debbie Cuddy for any ideas, requests, or concerns, 732-296-0681. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, we will next move on to the Department of Utilities, Council President Randy Farkas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the month of September, the Utility Department had following report. 51 daily station checks, 31 substation checks, and 52-plus utility markouts. Water samples, disinfectant residual testing was performed on September 2nd, 9th, and 16th. Water quality parameter testing was performed on September 23rd. All results were satisfactory. For the electric utility, various electric meters were replaced. Streetlights were repaired, replaced at the following locations. Clay, at 318 Clay Street, a new fixture was installed, 19 Pinewood, and on the corner of Akron and Townsend. A new overhead service drop was installed at Lynn Drive. Department members began moving materials from the old DPW building to the new DPW building. Three department bucket trucks received ANSI and DIElectric inspections for yearly compliance. Truck number nine is out of service at the VersaLift facility in Pennsylvania. The blinking light at Riva and Clay Street was struck by a tall truck and has been repaired and put back into service. For the Water Department, hydrant flushing was started on September 29th. It's expected to be completed on or about October 5th. In addition to flushing, every Borough fire hydrant has been operated to ensure that they are now in working water. The process has caused harmless discolored water in several areas, and we apologize for this inconvenience. The flushing of sediment is performed twice a year and is an NJDEP requirement. The lettering on the water tower has been completed, and it will be refilled to full capacity and put back into service on or about October 5th. Several water meters have been replaced and wired to external touchpad readers to ensure more accurate billing. For the Sewer Department, work was completed to replace a broken pump controller at the Church Street Booster Station. For trees, a contract has been awarded to Rich Tree Service for line clearance in the JFK Drive and southeast portion of the borough. Tree interference is the biggest cause of electrical outages, and line clearance is essential for a healthy distribution system. Just as a reminder, please remember to check Channel 15 and milltownnj.org for any updated information. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And also, I was happy, happy about the good news that you announced before from the work from the Utilities Committee to get what I like to call free money from the state is always a good thing. And it just shows that we've been really trying to, you know, reach out to get help wherever we can so that it doesn't come on the backs of the taxpayers to do some of these utility improvements that are much needed.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next we will move on to the Department of Public Works and Recycling, Councilwoman Anna Newbauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we have, alongside with all curbside collections, the DPW has the following to report. Road repair was performed at Scott Avenue in order to patch the water main break location. The DPW, alongside with the utilities, repaired a water main break on Carina Drive. Line painting has taken place, is ongoing throughout the town. Fence, there was a fence repair at Herbert Avenue Park. A tree on Herbert Avenue, Herbert Avenue has been removed. A dangerous tree at Mill Pond Path has been removed. A stump on Janet Court has been removed. DPW employees assisted the Middlesex County Mosquito Commission with tree removal and a beaver dam deconstruction on Janet Court in order to alleviate the flooding on Riders Lane. Grelitch Way Detention Pond has been cleared out of overgrown brush and debris. All Borough outfall pipes have been cleaned and inspected in order to meet stormwater regulations. Numerous guardrail areas have been cleaned and the guardrails paint touched up. Approximately 50 fire hydrants around town have been painted. The DPW provided two employees to assist utilities with hydrant flushing. Numerous faded stop signs have been replaced around town. And the DPW hosted another successful shredding day on Saturday, October 10. There's some reminders here. First, leaf bags are available Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the new DPW facility at 50 Washington Avenue. Saturday's schedule for leaf bag distribution will be from Saturday, October 10th through Saturday, November 14th, from 8:00 AM to noon on the new, at the new DPW facility at 50 Washington Avenue. The third reminder is, leaves must be bagged. No leaves may be placed in the streets loose as per the Borough ordinance. Please put bags out on your garbage day each week. As volume increases, we appreciate your patience with collection. Concrete curbside is this week. Please call extension 136 to make an appointment. Please check Channel 15 and milltownnj.org for DPW updates. And that's all from the DPW. Other than that, from the Cable TV Committee, I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow night is the Candidates Forum. And if you'd like to tune in, you can tune in either on YouTube or on Channel 15, and that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, thank you. So what time's the Candidates Forum tomorrow? Is it 7:00 or 7:30?
7:30. 7:30.
7.
7:30.
Okay, great. And I wish Councilman Peretti and Councilman Dixon good luck, along with your two running mates. I hope all goes well tomorrow. And thank you to the DPW for manning that shredding event. I was over there, and it was a little crazy because someone had a hammer that they, in their box of papers, that slowed things up. So it was a little, little challenge. But they did, they did a really good job, and I was quite shocked at how many people from all over the county take advantage of that. And if anybody... take advantage of that. And if anybody in town missed it, there's another one. Uh, in a few weeks, you can catch that on the, um, county website, but they, they have them regularly. And, uh, I, I used it for the first time this time, and it was, it's a, it's a really nice service that they, they provide. Uh, okay, so next we will move on to the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, Councilman Ron Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening I have no report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, next we have the Department of Recreation Councilman James Peretti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing in terms of a formal report tonight. I do want to mention some upcoming, um, meetings and planning sessions that Recreation and D P W will be undertaking. Um, I have confirmed that Milltown still has a grant from Middlesex County that will match us dollar for dollar for any park improvement project. So we're excited about that. We've already started taking inventory of our parks. And we'll be, um, meeting to pick up that work and present a comprehensive park improvement plan as soon as one is available to yourself and the rest of council.
Great, thank you.
No, that concludes my report.
Thanks very much. Okay, next we will move on to our Administrator Report, uh, Jeanette Larison.
I have no report for you tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have our Engineer Report, Mr. Mike McClellan. I know you have something to say, Mike. But you're on mute.
You're muted, Mike.
You're on mute.
That's your baseball.
Baseball or control pass.
There you go.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Sorry for the delay. We have one item tonight, and that is to discuss the, uh, uh, issues with regard to, we're working with Administrator Larison. Uh, we contacted P S E G regarding a possible bulk purchase along Ryder's Lane. We're preparing a sketch for use with further discussion with P S E G. That's all we have to, Madam Mayor.
So, um, Mike, before you go back on mute, uh, you heard we were talking to the, uh, Assemblyman earlier about, uh, what he, what was, we had with the county last year. So I wonder if you could just give folks an update and let us know where we are? Because I know that part of the funding was to, uh, do some planning, and I know that you've been, uh, working on that. So is that something that you can share with us yet, or are you still working on it?
Oh, certainly, Mayor, yeah. As, as been discussed before, uh, we are in a process of working on a, a study with the M C U A relative to, uh, regional wastewater solutions. Milltown's obviously force main, uh, is the large part of that. Uh, the question is, what is the most feasible route of constructing a new force main from your pump station at Church Street to its discharge in New Brunswick? We're currently discharged, ultimately flows to M C U A. Uh, there's several alternatives been studied. Uh, lately, we've been trying to get a, a read from the power company, which, as you know, owns a significant utility line that runs from Maine, actually through the borough, uh, north towards Route One and along Route One. We have not heard back from them. Uh, there is a scheduled meeting in about a week or so with M C U A to report. And I imagine that, that not long after that, they're going to be contacting the Borough for further discussions to indicate their findings.
Okay, great. That's very helpful. And then hopefully, going forward, once we do have, uh, the, the meeting with them, maybe we can invite people from the M C U A or the county just to do benchmarks going forward so the public and, and all of the council can know, uh, where we stand on the, on the project.
Okay, will do.
So that, thank you. All right, and next we will move on to our Attorney Report, Mr. Peter Vignola.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Um, the only thing I have to add is, um, I'm currently in the process of putting together an ordinance revision which would consolidate your planning board and your zoning board for your consideration. Based upon the size of our municipality, um, we are not obligated to have two separate boards. We're entitled to have one planning board that would be capable of exercising the powers of the zoning board of adjustment. And, um, I, I think it's something the board may, uh, the council and mayor may want to consider. And I was going to put that together for your consideration potentially at the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
You got it.
Anyone have any questions for any of our professionals? I forgot to ask as they were going through. Okay. Uh, I will now, uh, move on to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business they would like to share with the, at the meeting tonight?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
So I wanted to bring up the resolution we passed last week granting permission to the Milltown Education Foundation to host trunk retreat at Borough Park. Um, in the past, the Borough has always been a cosponsor of that event. And, um, this year, due to COVID nineteen, the town has declined to sponsor or cosponsor any such events. Um, but I do believe we should still grant the group access to the park without the park rental fee that is normally not applicable when we cosponsor an event. So, um, with the permission of the Borough Attorney, I would like to make a motion that we waive the park fee for the Milltown Education Foundation if that's possible tonight.
Oh, kind of an impromptu resolution to waive the, 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 the park rental fee?
Yes, just for the, uh, that, the one-time use for the Milltown Education Foundation.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't see a, a terrible problem with doing it that way. I mean, um, you know, I, I, you know, it's either waive the fee or refund the fee. Frankly, it's probably easier not to take it and give it back to them. Um, you know, I, I would just say, uh, make that motion, um, and, and see what happens.
Okay, so therefore I make the motion to waive the park rental fee.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, on the fly by, uh, Councilman Peretti, second by Councilman Legati. Uh, go ahead. Will, does the clerk need a roll call for this?
We'll call the roll.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Dixon.
Aye.
Councilman Legati.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
You're muted, Anna.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilman Peretti.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
Gabrielle, I'll have something over to you tomorrow that memorializes that a little more formally, so it can get thrown into the minutes.
Okay, so you want me to just reallocate a resolution to twenty-one ninety-four because we've had it on before in the past? Like a waiver resolution?
Yeah, I can, I'll just, yeah, it's a, it's a quick and easy resolution, you know. They want to have an event, we want to waive the fee, we waive the fee.
Okay. Thank you.
You got it.
Uh, and thank you, Councilman Peretti, for, for bringing that up. We, uh, we weren't sure whether it was going to have to be a refund or, but I'm glad we can take care of it this evening, and they can move ahead with their planning. Uh, anyone else have any old business? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business they would like to bring before the council tonight? Uh, actually, I do. Uh, you know, it's not, well, it's not new business, but, um, I have from the clerk. I'd like to just go over the election information one more time, and then I'll share, and I'll share with our clerk because she has some even newer information, but, um, the, I just will read what we have. So the general election will be November third, twenty twenty. Polls are open from six A M. to eight P M. Joyce Kilmer School at twenty-one West Church Street will be the sole location to vote in person in Milltown. All regulations regarding social distancing will be adhered to at the polling location. In-person voting is limited to provisional paper ballots. All active registered voters, regardless of political affiliation, will receive a mail-in ballot from the county, which we should have already. The county sent five thousand two hundred and fifty-one mail-in ballots to residents of Milltown. As of October eighth, the county has received nine hundred and ninety-eight mail-in ballots from Milltown. We encourage all residents and registered voters to vote by mail. Uh, mail-in ballots can be mailed or delivered in person to the county. Mail-in ballots can be brought to the polling location only by the person whose ballot it is. There is a ballot drop box located at the Milltown Municipal Building where mail-in ballots can be dropped anytime before eight P M. on Election Day. The ballot box is open and under video surveillance. The county empties the ballot box daily at this time. Information regarding the election is available on the Borough website and Vote twenty twenty. If anyone has questions regarding registration, which I believe ends today, polling locations, or other election questions, please contact the Borough Office, Borough Clerk's Office, and review the information posted to the Borough website. And Gabrielle, do you have some more, um, that you'd want to add?
I did. Today, the county announced that they're also going to be having, um, voter information centers. Um, I'm going to quickly share the screen. Um, this was the flyer that was sent out, um, this evening. Uh, the county will be hosting, um, voter information centers. One will be located at Monroe Township Library. One will be at Highland Park Borough Hall, and one will be at Sayerville Borough Hall. At the, um, sorry, there's Mike McClellan dropped. Um, at the voting information centers, they will have ability to get replacement ballots if they did not receive their mail-in ballot or if they've lost it. And that's countywide, so you can go to any of these voter information centers, even though you're a Milltown resident. You could go to Sayerville, and they would actually have a ballot that you would be able to get from them. Um, you can also go there for signature verification, um, or any types of questions to be answered for, uh, the general election in twenty twenty. These will begin on October nineteenth, and they will run through Election Day. The county is working very hard to keep in touch with our residents and the public regarding everything going on. So this will be put on the Borough website and as a news flash, um, tonight so that people can have the information, but it will start next Monday.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions about any of that? Okay. Uh, seeing no other, uh, new business, I will move on to, oh, sure.
Uh, I'd like to call for a Utility Committee meeting, uh, next week. I'll, I'll try to get ahold of everyone and make sure, uh, we can get, get a good date. Uh, but I'd like to, uh, meet with, uh, the, our engineer and start, uh, planning for this, uh, the grant money that we received to start planning for what lines we're going to, uh, look at to, uh, reline. So let's, uh, get the ground running on this.
Good, sounds good. Uh, anyone else? I'm feeling like I had something else to say, and I can't remember what it was. Old, old age. All right, well, we'll just move ahead and get audience com. I can always do in council comment. Uh, next, we will move on to audience comments. If anyone, uh, from the audience wishes to comment, please follow the instructions by the clerk and state your name and address for the record.
Uh, if you would like to raise your hand to make a comment, you can press star nine from your phone, Option or Alt Y from your Mac or PC, uh, or the raised hand on the app or computer program. Uh, please just announce your name and address once you're unmuted. And. Courtney Williams.
Hi, everybody. Courtney Williams, three eighteen Clay. Um, thank you so much for the information on voter, um, information. Um, I'm just wondering, um, it has to do with the last council meeting for the H R C. Um, I just wanted to see if there were any updates on, you know, um, the application period or if there have been any movements on making a determination. Um, yeah.
I will answer that, and we have eight applications now. Um, I, we just got one in today, so I was speaking with the clerk's office, and we thought since there's still, um, some coming in, we would give it, um, two more weeks till the end of the month. You know, we will post that, you know, we'll, we'll take applications through the, or end of October. And then we will make the, uh, determinations, seeing depending on how many we have. But I, you know, I was very pleased with the, with the applications that we've gotten so far. And, um, you know, we'll just give people a little more time. And so then, you know, at, at the meeting subsequent to the end of, uh, October, we will, um, uh, follow up as to, you know, making sure that we get everyone in place and get it.
That's great to hear that there's a lot of actual, there's a lot of interest. I just wanted to know, um, since there are multiple candidates, what is, is, what's the kind of envisionment for, like, is there going to be an interview process? I'm just kind of.
I think there might be. Uh, you know, I, I can't say for sure, but I don't think it would, uh, you know, it, it certainly wouldn't help, I mean, hurt to, uh, get a little, a little more information about each candidate. So, um, I would say, you know, we'll, we'll give it the two weeks, and then that would probably be my job to follow up with each one of the, uh, the candidates. And then we will make the determination, uh, and the council can vote on it, uh, shortly afterward.
Great, that's awesome to hear. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other audience questions, comments?
Sorry, Courtney, are you done? I just want to make sure before I blow your hand.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Uh, we do have another one. I have Margaret O'Donnell. Ms. O'Donnell, you're unmuted.
Hi, Margaret. You can see your hand raised. You're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Ms. O'Donnell, just check to make sure that your microphone input is chosen. Because it's saying you're unmuted, but there's no sound coming from your microphones.
Peretti.
Now you're on mute. Now hopefully you can unmute.
Ms. O'Donnell? Ms. O'Donnell, if you'd like, you can send me a chat, and I can read it for you if you'd like.
It's funny that I can hear her typing.
Oh, no, that's me. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's you, okay.
I just sent her a message directly in the chat.
All right, if, does it, I, I guess while we wait, if anyone else has a question or comment?
I don't have any other hands raised.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead, Gabrielle, or are you getting a chat question?
I, I have messaged Ms. O'Donnell. I haven't received, um, a response. If you'd like, we can move on to council comments, and if Ms. O'Donnell.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine, yeah.
Check back.
We do that. Yep, thank you. All right, next we will move on to council comments. Does any member of the council have any comments this evening?
Uh, I do, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
So thanks for indulging me again, but I just want to, uh, say thank you again to the Assemblyman, Assemblyman Danielson for working with the Department of Utilities to provide that much-needed support for Milltown, um, to do, you know, to continue our water main improvement work. Um, I'm proud of the work we've done to get the grant, and I look forward to, uh, working with Council President Farkas, Councilman Zambrana, C and E, to create that action plan, uh, to start that relining, which will, like, uh, Council President Farkas mentioned, be together and discussing that. So thank you to everyone involved, and I'm really happy that Milltown can start seeing some of, uh, the results for that.
Great, me, me too. Any other member of the council have any comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just want to echo Councilman Peretti's, uh, sentiments, and thank you to everybody on the Utilities Committee for their work. Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, for your leadership. And, uh, thank the Assemblyman for his, uh, help in fighting for the residents of Milltown. He's a big asset for us.
Yep. I agree. Thank you, Council President. Anyone else? Okay. Go back and see. Go back and see, Gabrielle, any, any movement on the chat? I still haven't, I still don't remember what I was going to say, so. Must have been a while.
Unfortunately, there's no chat. Ms. O'Donnell is still unmuted, if she is able to speak, but I haven't received anything.
Margaret, sorry, going once, going twice. Sold. Feel, feel free to email us, or, and we'll, we'll get to it. Next time, I, this happened to me at a work meeting where my microphone and speaker didn't work, and there's nothing worse than being on a Zoom or a Teams meeting and having no sound, so I can empathize. But, all right, so seeing no more council comments, we will move on to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Council President Farkas, second.